I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Before the start of this meeting, the board met with staff and the Ways and Means Committee in our, one of our first budget, it was our first budget work session. Before we get started with the regular meeting tonight, we're going to have a couple presentations. The first one from the GHD Stormwater Management Group. Are you guys ready?
Yeah.
Okay, please feel free to take the podium with a microphone.
You say that would be, that would be mine, so I'll take it first.
And then identify yourself, Russ Mahalik.
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm Russ Mahalik with GHD, and I've been doing your IDDE illicit discharge work for the last, I guess, about 15 years or whatever. So, we're gonna make this real quick. I'm not gonna go through all the stuff that we've had in the past. We're just gonna get into the current status. Everything is good. We did inspections in 2018 again of the hotspots. We did some DNA sampling again, and I'll go over real quick what we're gonna do here going forward for 2019. You're in year 16 of your program. We did the hotspot sampling. Most of that is down Old New Road area, that neighborhood over there, and then St. Lawrence Way and McCarthy, I believe that is, over in that neck of the woods there. You did receive your new permit finally in 2019 here, so you're good to go for the next five years. And September of this year, I guess, is when your next report is due to the state. Again, just shows how the township is broken up into three different locations, and it goes along with your septic. So, basically, we did hotspot areas, Area 1, 2, and 3. Sample analysis, we had fecal at all the locations with flow. Area 1, we did 11 samples. Area 2, we did 10. Area 3, there was only one location. Out of those samples, I choose the five highest fecals, and I go back within the next week or whatever and collect DNA to try to differentiate whether it's human or animal, that sort of thing. Again, we did five of them in 2018. DNA can tell us the difference between goose, cow, ruminant, which is deer something that has multiple stomachs, dog, and human. Area 1 of the inspections, five of them were over 5, or 200 colonies, which is what the state is allowed, allows the sewage discharge to be. Maximum there, we had one that was 3200. We did DNA sampling of two of the samples. Both of them were positive for human. One was also positive for dog.
Russ, question was, go back to slide, on the, one that was tested for humans, was that the one, do you know if that was one that had the maximum output?
Yes, yes, it was the one that had the maximum amount. I always do the ones with the maximum amount.
Okay.
So, again, and one of those also, besides being positive for human, was positive for dog also. So, there was both types of fecal in that one. Area 2 again, out of 10 samples, five were greater than 200. One was greater than 6,000, because I didn't have the lab analyze. If you got 6,000, there's no reason to analyze for anything higher than that. Out of three samples there, two of them were positive for human, two were positive for dog. One of them actually, the one that came back greater than 6,000, wasn't positive for human or dog, and talking to the laboratory that does that work, there are other animals out there that they can't fingerprint yet, i.e. raccoons, possums, skunks, things like that. So, that, greater than 6,000, was not human and/or dog for that one, for some reason.
Would fox show up as a dog, or something?
Uh, fox should show up as a dog, yes. Fox and coyote should show up as being part of the dog family.
Lot of fox around here.
So, that was Area 2. Area 3, one sample, it was greater than 200, but it was only 240, and I did not do any DNA over there. That's the upper end of the township up there. Most of that is swerved already, so I don't expect to find much up there.
It's so funny.
This is just a comparison through the last four years to show you how things are staying pretty, pretty consistent. Five or six in Area 1 are always greater than 200. Same thing, you know, 4, 5, 7, they're, they're staying pretty consistent through the years in the hotspots that we're doing. Again, the maximums, if you look on there, some of those fluctuate a little bit, but overall, the township is holding their own. Going forward this year, the state has changed what their definition of an outfall is now. So, there has been some new outfalls added to the map, and some of what we were calling outfalls before are gonna become observation points. I will have to go out and actually mark where these outfalls discharge to the actual stream now, not where it comes out the end of the pipe and flows down a little swell. So, there will be some more mapping coming up this year. Again, we're gonna continue to monitor the hotspots. We'll do any additional inspections or sampling that the township may request of us. You're currently in compliance with your permit. And some of the other things we can do, we have done in the past with limited success, would be dye tracing, TV inspections, and obviously, the DNA testing. So, again, here's your takeaways, you're in compliance, we're gonna continue. We're gonna GPS and update the outfall map, you know. Township needs to keep up on their septic system maintenance. This is part of your public participation that you're required to do, and pollution prevention and good housekeeping is always the way for the township to go. You know, we're trying to improve the quality of the water, and my colleague over there is going to take over after me and give you a little bit about these TMDLs and everything else that have come out in the new permit to give you a better idea of how to improve your water quality. So, that basically is my part of the presentation. If anybody has any questions, before I step away and let Patrick come up and give his half.
Anybody have any questions for Russ?
Just, just one. So, we don't have to really change anything. We're in good shape, no other things that...
Well, we're, we're in good shape. The township is moving in the right direction by putting sewers in these areas with the hotspots, and hopefully, once those sewers get in and we continue to do sampling there, we start seeing no human fecal. You're never gonna stop the dogs and the geese and that sort of thing, but hopefully, at least we'll take the human fecal out of the storm sewers.
Do you suspect that ever may happen? Like, if these, if these hotspots in Area 2 keep happening?
Well, yes, because you're currently working on, on soaring that neighborhood over there. I mean, it's gonna take a couple of years down the road till they get the sewers in, but we should see a gradual drop-off then in the human. Although, although, again, I'm not 100% sure, but it seems to me, discussions at past meetings that I was here, people were gonna be allowed to stay on their septic systems until they sell their house, and then they would be forced to hook into the sewer as long as they maintain. So, that may take a little longer until we see the lack of human in there.
I should ask you for Area 3, because there is no project there. So, if you found it there...
Well, we're finding fecals there, but we're not finding human fecal there.
Okay, okay.
And again, the fecals that we are finding there are very low. They're only barely above the 200s, which is what a sewage treatment plan is allowed to discharge.
Very good.
These other areas, we're finding them in the thousands versus the 200 range.
Very good, thank you.
So, anybody else?
Questions? Thank you, Russ.
I hope I cut that in here five minutes.
All right. Patrick.
I've heard it so many times now that...
Yeah, but only from you, it's so special. I like the boots on the ground.
All right, and I'm Patrick Boggs.
At the, you have to be at the microphone, Patrick, we're televised, so as soon as Ed steps away.
I'm gonna ask Bill to come join. So, we were here two years ago. I'm Patrick Boggs from GHD. This is my colleague, go ahead.
Bill Wybrecht.
And, and we're happy to be here. We're here, I was here two years ago, along with Mario, to, to work through an earlier iteration of this plan. We submitted back in 2017, based on regulations from the state, that we had to do what's called a PRP Plan, Pollution Reduction Plan. And it's not just you guys, we, and I'm trying to, to go through as quickly as I can, but I know that Andrea provides you guys a hard copy, so if there's any of the stuff you wanna review later, feel free. But you guys are not the only ones, as we explained a couple of years ago. So, we submitted in 2017. It took DEP about a year to actually review our plan, so we were waiting on pins and needles to see if they would accept it, or if they would have comments and revisions. So, they did have some comments that I wanted to quickly go through. This is, of course, your, your township, and there's four main streams that we were concerned with. We're gonna focus today, the thing that really changed was on Cook's Run and the Shammany Creek. So, as we go forward, those are the two ones that we're gonna concentrate on. The difference between what we did in 2017 and what we are proposing right now are focused in those two areas. The biggest thing is that in the mapping, there's areas that we were able to parse out. So, we had to calculate how much of your township was generating certain pollutants to go to the streams, as Russ was talking about, to try to help clean up some of the streams. And they had some rules for us that we could follow, where some things we could, what they say, parse out, so it's kinda on, on your taxes, you can, you can exclude, you have certain deductions, you don't have to worry about that. So, we assumed, rightly so, a fair amount of deductions in 2017, that when DEP came back, they want us to, to tap that back. So, if you look, here's the two, I'm gonna go back and forth a couple of times. If you look at 2017, in blue is what we deducted. So, they came back and kinda nickel and dimed us, and made us reduce those. And the biggest areas, again, as I was saying, are these two watersheds here and right there, in the Shammany, and I believe it was the Cook's Run. So, what we ended up having to do is look at those two watersheds. So, the Shammany, the reduction that we had to do increased almost by 50%.
Patrick, you have to stay at the, at the microphone, because they can't hear you on TV at home.
Okay.
Sorry.
Sorry about that. So, it increased by 50%, what we had to reduce in the Shammany, the Shammany Creek watershed. And you'll see in the Cook's Run watershed, in, more than doubled what we had to increase there. Oh, thank you. So, the main difference between 2017 and, and what we're doing, what we're proposing right now, is in those two watersheds. So, we had to increase the number of projects that we had that in those watersheds to try to offset the, the increase. So, we brought Bill Wybrecht with us, he's a stream restoration specialist, so we wanted to get, we wanted to design these projects with a little more detail, and Bill has some expertise, and I'd like to hand it off to him. So, there's two projects that we looked at within those watersheds that I'd like Bill to talk about. So, that's gonna be BMP A is in the Shammany Creek watershed, and BMP E is in the Cook's Run watershed.
Where did you announce that?
Yeah, this right and left, because you're forwarding backwards.
Well, it's kinda hard to see with the lights here. The photograph on the left is kinda typical, that stream, you had a vertical bank on the outside of the bend, and you have these gravel bars that, that extend out as this bank's eroding. It doesn't really get any wider, because the sediment and gravel from upstream will drop out on the point bar here. So, they call this channel migration. It's shifting this way, it's gonna continue to erode this way, and you'll have that flip-flopping back and forth on the stream as you go downstream. This one, this is an example of a straight reach here, and you have a vertical bank here. There are some, some trees at the top here, but it's still eroding. This looks like a, a big gravel deposit here that's now becoming vegetated. This was on what we called, it's the unnamed tributary to the Shammany Creek, it didn't really have a stream name. This was the lower end of that stream, where, pretty well entrenched, so there's really no available floodplain here. It's, it's down to bedrock, so it's not gonna cut anymore, but the next process in, in the channel evolution is, it's gonna try to get wider, and you had some big trees here, and at places, you'll see that the trees are leaning, so it's only a matter, here's a tree that's fallen over, actually. It's only a matter of time before those trees go, and then you'll get more banks. So, by stabilizing them, you could reduce the pollutant loading, mostly sediment. This was BMP E. Again, you have, not to the extreme as that earlier photo, but you got a vertical bank along the outside of a bend, and you got this deposition building this way, so it's another example of channel migration here. And this is looking downstream at this reach. You can see on this bend here, where you got the vertical bank and the gravel bar building there. So, these, the projects we looked at didn't really need a lot of plan form adjustment or the pattern of the stream, it was more the bank stability to keep it from eroding anymore. And these are some projects that I've completed in most recent years here. This was after a very large storm. Again, you have this bar deposition on this side, the inside of the bend, and a vertical bank here, it's kinda hard to see it's vertical, but the remedy was just to armor the toe of this bank with large rock, grade the upper bank, and then we planted it with willow stakes. And this was, this was two years after we had done the work. Another, this is another urban stream, this is in York County. Very, again, very simple stabilization effort here. We took the vertical bank, graded it back, and just put some toe rock in on the bottom here. And this was the next year after we had done the work. We kept the trees in place, this was actually planted, so you can't, this was early in the spring, so you can't really see the things coming up. This was another urban stream, it was a headwater stream, a lot of stormwater influences here. The channel had cut down, and we basically graded this bench down a little bit so that there was a floodplain. As the water came up, it could get rid of some of that energy. These are some of the tricks of the trade with these urban streams. So, we didn't make the channel any bigger, actually, it looks a little smaller here, but it had this floodplain available on the side where it's benched out, and then this was planted as well.
So, those are generally the, the projects that we're looking at. We put together a cost estimate, and we're, we're pretty confident that this is on the, the high end of the scale. We would not anticipate this being anymore. I believe our cost estimate for the first round was around $2 million. So, having the, the increased project and, and the additional projects puts us closer to, to $3 million. So, once they approve the, the TMDL and the PRP, we'll have five years, this is, these projects will need to be installed over the course of that five-year program time. And we put together a, a schedule of, of what we need in order to, to hit that schedule. And now, we're, we're available for questions. I know that, that part of what we need this being, to be, is to, to have public participation, so, so to give the, the public an opportunity to ask us any questions, that's one of the requirements of the permit, in addition to the board.
If you go back to the cost estimate sheet, slide, it has on there spare tire.
Yes.
What does that mean?
We have, we have a few projects that are, that are kind of in our back pocket. Some of the projects are located on private property, which we, we assume that, that will be given, an agreement will be worked out between the, the township and the property owner, but just in case, if that falls through, there's a spare tire, there, there's an optional project. The other thing we looked at is...
But if there's an optional project, wouldn't it drive the cost up?
Say that again?
If there is an additional project, wouldn't it drive the cost up over the $3 million? I think he means a little...
Correct.
These backpocket or spare tire projects would be, these were potential projects we identified as something that could possibly be considered if, if any of those other projects wouldn't advance any further, whether it's landowner participation or whatever, then we have another project to go to.
I see what you're saying, okay.
They would be slightly more...
Yeah.
I mean, because they're slightly less desirable. So, so the spare tires might have a little more difficulty in terms of access, where they're, they're not our, you know, our first choice, but they're, they're a good second choice. The other thing we looked at is a partnership with the Borough. I know that, that was not our primary focus, but I, I know that the township was approached from the Borough, that they have a shortage of land, but, and they would be interested possibly in partnering with the township. So, I think that one of these spare tire projects, and, and some of these projects we described, we could partner with the township, I'm sorry, with, with the Borough.
What if we weren't able to complete those, that list of projects in the five-year timeline? What happens?
That is a good question, Mario, perhaps maybe will answer that better than I can.
Come on, I'm retiring.
And I think that, that you guys are not the only ones in, you know, in this boat.
Didn't let me get out of here. To be perfectly honest, have no idea what DEP would do if you do not meet your five-year requirement. I'm not sure that they're gonna come down here, you know, and lock everybody up. I'm sure there'll be, you know, warning letters. I believe if you are working towards it, doing things, you know, in, in a systemized way, if you get halfway through your list, you have projects on the ground, and they have approved those, I don't think they're going to fine you. I mean, they, there is an ability to fine you. I mean, there are, that's in the, it's part of the permit, if you don't do this, you know. But I don't see DEP coming down and doing it right off the bat. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I just have no idea, is that a small fine or a big fine? I mean, I could take a lot of small fines for $3 million.
$10,000 a day?
$10,000, that's what we've heard from colleagues who have been fined, it's...
Okay.
It's $10,000 a day.
I think the big thing is if you're showing you're making progress on a project...
You have to go to the microphone?
Yeah.
Sorry, Bill.
If, if you show you're making progress on a project, I think they'll totally back off. And, and the other thing, too, as part of the schedule, it can take up to a year, maybe even more, for DEP to review your design and your permit application, which, I mean, that's a huge chunk of time in the schedule.
Can we fine them for being so...
Yeah, being late.
I mean, and the other, you know, I, this is probably gonna be very elementary and stupid, but the reason why these costs are assessed to us is because these streams happen to be impartial in Doylestown Township?
They're all in Doylestown Township.
Well, portions of those streams.
Portions of them, not all of them, yeah.
Not the whole stream, but...
So, every municipality is going to be sharing, and whatever portion of these streams are in their township?
Correct.
And how is it, how is it assessed that we have more burden than, like Buckingham or Doylestown Borough, so that we have to pay more for our portion than some other municipality would pay? That shares the same tributary? Do you, how's that done?
Part of it was, in, in the tax analogy that I was talking about before, we have to figure out how much pollutants the township is discharging to the stream. So, the, the green areas, we calculated how much, how many pounds of sediment per year you're discharging. So, it's sediment, nitrogen, and phosphorus. So, based on that, they want you to remove a certain percentage of that.
I see. So, there's nothing subjective about it?
It's similar to doing your taxes. There's, there is some...
You said that.
How, how you interpret certain deductions. I, I, we worked with Mario to try to reduce this as much as possible, and we consider ourselves almost like accountants, trying to figure out, how can we get you, you know, the cheapest plan as, as possible? But there, there are certain black and white things that, that they wanted, and, and when they reviewed us, they came back and held their feet, not to the fire, but...
Are we gonna see the same calculations? Are we gonna be able, are you gonna be able to share with us our sister municipalities' obligations, like what they were assessed and what their costs of remediation is?
We can get that if you'd like. I think that's similar to...
I'd love to see that.
Similar to the township, I think that they had to publish their report. So, just like, you know, Andrea put this report up on the, on the website, they likely have theirs up on the website.
And just so the board knows, we did talk to the Borough, and they, as we talked, we have sort of the land, and, and how can we, we have some of our streams, like Cook's Run, that can, you know, run into both municipalities. And I don't wanna, you know, speak for them or anything, but they too are also looking at a multimillion dollar, you know, kinda same, same scale magnitude, maybe a little less than ours, but I don't know about the others, but we can certainly have Patrick look at those and see what our other municipalities are probably looking at the same thing. I know, talking to my colleagues, everybody's kinda on the same topic. And it, this is sort of, if I'm not mistaken, Mario or Patrick, federal mandates coming to the state, coming to the local municipality, and it's unfunded.
Right, we know that for sure, but, I, but don't go to a lot of trouble, I don't want, I don't wanna have any more expense on this. If you have, it's gonna cost us to get this information, I was just curious.
I should be able to give you a pretty close apples to apples.
Okay.
Here's where you are, here's your neighbors.
Okay.
You mentioned it for five years, but in actuality, we're gonna get another list of things five years from now, so it's, I won't say going forever, but it's gonna go on for many, many years. Is that fair?
Yes.
That's a good assumption.
Well, good for you, right? You guys have my... Job security.
Keep you happy, though.
Well, we're not happy. It's something that, you know, unfortunately, we have to do, but I also see the utility in doing it, because we are stewards of the environment, and, and it costs money, and our residents will have to pay for it. So, any other questions?
Just briefly, real quick, just, Patrick, if you go back to the cost estimates and the budget, can you just describe how you envision these projects being, you know, going forth, working with us, and, and how we're gonna do these? I just think it's, I want everybody to be clear on how we're going to implement these over the next few years, you know, what your recommendation is.
We did put the, the second page there. We do have a year 1 through 5, and we, as soon as we're given approval from DEP that begins year 1, so we believe that, that we should look at at least the, the bigger project and some of the smaller projects. I do know that some of the BMP, there's some basin minor adjustments we can do with BMPs to basins, and I know that, that you guys started looking at that. Stephanie, you can correct me. I believe there's another consultant that was looking at that, that wanted to start going. There's some stuff that we can do early on in the process to show DEP that we're working towards hearing these projects, but we do wanna try to spread the cost out to you guys as much as possible. But I think, working backwards, we anticipate that the biggest project is gonna be the Shammany, unnamed tributary to the Shammany Creek, which is BMP A. We think that'll be constructed in year 4 or 5. So, I'm just working backwards from that, there would be permitting, and we would have to get it surveyed, so we believe that that'll, that'll take some time, and you'll see that we, we try to just spread it out. We think that permitting would happen one year, and then construction would happen the next year on some of the smaller projects. If it's really small, you might be able to do it all in one. So, then based on that, we just tried to, to move it around.
But you envision it to be a design bid build, bid build process, not something where it's like we've designed it and it's an in-house, it's, it's kinda like a specialized thing where it's not gonna be an in-house Public Works type of project?
And I think Bill might be able to answer this better than me, but I know that we, we spoke with Paul, Paul Gar, and you guys do seem pretty capable. There's, there's a lot of small projects that we could do in-house, and that would help drive the, the cost down. And I think that those would be the ones that we would try to do first, to see how comfortable they are at doing this stuff themselves, and then go from there. I, I think the, the larger one that we're talking about, the Shammany unnamed tributary, that's probably gonna have to be bid. That, that is a fairly large project.
If we do in-house as much as possible, are you, who's, is there an oversight with one of you guys, or are we...
We're definitely interested in, in providing that. We haven't...
Do we need you for that? I mean, if we're, if we're doing it in specs...
You'd probably have to have them measure the effect to meet the criteria of the permit.
Yes, but I know, just for the construction part.
Sometimes, a special condition of the permit is that the designer...
You gotta talk in.
Sorry. Sometimes, a special condition of the permits when they're authorized is that the designer be present at least part of the time during construction.
Okay, well, that's fair. We don't need you there all the time, or you, we don't need you to do it.
Correct.
Right. Right.
I've worked with municipal equipment operators before on small projects, and once they get, they actually get into it.
I'm sure that's true. Our guys are really good at that. What do you suppose of the lists here would be considered a small project that we could handle ourselves, potentially? Because I'd like to star those now. Potentially.
Definitely the basins. That's minor grading. There may not be any DEP permitting on that.
Okay.
Probably one of the smaller stream restorations.
Definitely the BMPG. We didn't have a picture of that project, but that would be one that I think could be handled with.
Okay.
We want to try to get a couple early wins, you know, and once we do that, too, we may be able to go back to the cost estimate and revise that down.
That would be good. That would be very good. Thank you.
Just so the board knows, I think we'll, as we had worked with Mario a lot on getting us to this point, this is where Jeff Ottenazio, our new township engineer, will be stepping in and guiding us through this process.
Do you know how to do this stuff?
Our office handles MS4 work for other municipalities as well.
So could you be that oversight guy?
Wouldn't be me specifically, as far as the construction oversight you're saying, or the oversight of the...
No, the project.
Design, engineering, permitting, working with GHD to make sure that...
So we would get a discount because you're our engineer. Just saying. All right, we don't want to take any work from you, but obviously, we need to save as much money as we can for our taxpayers.
Roger.
And if we can do, and we have a very competent, you know, public works department, so if we can do as much as possible in-house with, you know, the necessary oversight, what's where we're going to go for, obviously, right? Wait, is there any other? Mr. Lair, you want to take the microphone, please, and ask your question?
No, I just have a question.
You need to take the microphone, anyway.
I have a question on that. Could you go back to that schedule where you showed in the Shaminie Creek it was like a million five? Could you tell me...
This is Bill Lair.
Yeah, thanks.
Say your name.
Bill Lair.
Thank you.
Where was that again?
Estates of Doylestown Development.
Tributary, Nishamani.
I'm sorry, the cost...
The cost estimates, you had a million five for in the Shaminie Creek. Could you tell me where that is in the Shaminie Creek stream, what part of the township that is in?
Yeah, we could take a walk, if you want. It is right behind this building, is along the, we tried to make it as much in the township property as we could. So we have, if you know where the castle is...
Yes.
Maybe another few hundred, we walked it all the way upstream, and then it started to look good after maybe 400 feet beyond the castle. So pretty much right along there, all the way down, past here to the road.
To Turk Road.
Turk Road.
So that has nothing to do with the Shaminie Creek that runs along Alms House Road?
It drains directly into the Nishamani Creek. It's located within the Nishamani Creek watershed. Let me see if I can show you.
They call it an unnamed tributary, unnamed whatever.
But it ends up going into the tributary, it goes into the creek at Turk Road. So, well, like if you came out, if you followed basically the backside of our property here, Center Park, and headed down that stream, and it pops out right at, just past the gun club there, at Turk, and that's the tributary we're referring to.
So it has nothing to do with the, I'll say, the lower part of the Shaminie, which goes along Alms House Road, flows down into Jamison?
No.
Okay.
No.
No.
I mean, is that, I'm just curious why I saw that, why is that one, this one, yeah, one section of the Nishamani Creek just pinpointed, why not the whole of the Shaminie Creek?
It is a tributary. So if you look at the green area, all that drains directly to the Nishamani Creek.
Okay.
So it is a tributary, too. So if you, you know, if you keep walking down that tributary, you do hit the Nishamani Creek.
I think this question is, there's a whole portion of the Shaminie Creek itself...
The reason I asked this question, not to interrupt, the reason I asked this question because where we are in the Estates of Doylestown, there's an unnamed tributary that runs behind where we are, and runs in the Nishamani Creek. Like four or five years ago, we got cited and fined by DEP because we didn't maintain that. And, you know, part of the problem, I don't want to bring this up now, but part of the problem wasn't the problem of the residents of where that creek is, is a lot of the water flow was coming from Warrington Township and from the quarry into that unnamed tributary and down in the Shaminie Creek along Alms House Road. And we spent like almost $50,000 to maintain the creek, and over the last four or five years, everything that we spent is gone, because the water just keeps getting worse and worse. And that's why I didn't know where that is. I mean, there's problems everywhere in the township, so I didn't know why you're just singling out that one area. I'm just curious, because that's the first I've seen this.
The attractiveness of this project is that it was on the township property.
Okay, so it's just township property, then?
Correct. But I think that going forward another five years, like that would be, we'd be interested to hear from you, you know, as we look towards other projects that we may or may not have to do.
No, no. We're going to check that.
It's all private property back there.
Any other question of these gentlemen?
Hi, Amy Kaminsky, 1560 Lower State. Are there any grants that are out there that we could apply for to help out with, to reduce the cost? I'm seeing head shake, no, nothing out there. So DEP made the dictate, and it's up to you guys to pick up. Excellent.
There are some grants, but they're, you know, pretty competitive right now. And I think it is not a bad thing to look into, particularly if you partner with the Borough, it'll make it look very attractive. If you have this project that goes right through your park system, you know, you have the big castle playground, that could be an attractive project for a grant. But it does take, you know, the effort to apply for it.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, guys. I think. Appreciate the information. All right. Bye, Mario. Next up is Chairman of our Planning Commission, Judy Hendrickson, who's going to make a presentation regarding our comprehensive plan and update.
Okay, mine's real short and sweet. No pictures, sorry.
You like sweet, though.
Well, there's not much of a budget, so that should help you. I'm the chair. Tom Kelso is our vice chair. George Lowenstein, Greg Ripa, and Ted Feldstein are on our board, and Rick Colallo is our liaison. Judith Stern-Goldstein is our planning consultant from Boucher James Engineering, and Cynthia Delgado is our recording secretary, with Stephanie always there. The Planning Commission will continue to support our ongoing and new projects and work closely with the community and other boards and commissions, as well as the Bucks County Planning Commission, Del Valle University, New Britain Borough Joint Planning Commission, and the university corridor along Butler Avenue. We're encouraging more efficient energy use, denser and more varied housing development linked to our aging demographics, better open spaces, good circulation through the community, and a continued expansion of our bike and height network. This past year, we've been concentrating and have held several workshops, diligently working on reexamining our comprehensive plan. It's 10 years old, and it's time. And we've also been looking at various sections of the zoning ordinance to clean that up. A draft of our comprehensive plan is in your packets, and we're updating the zoning map, you know, the zoning map for the township, and looking at the zoning for Fountainville area in light of recent decisions and developments in that area. We'd like the board to authorize us to move ahead with that review of that draft. So that's the action point for tonight. And we're also interfacing with code enforcement, the police department, on various areas that we need to clarify and clean up our zoning ordinance. So that's, there's a lot of work there, and we're trying to get that done this year. We really want to get that complete and up to date. The projects that we've been reviewing have been a sketch plan through final development for the Doylestown Walk Project. That's the Bray-Smith long tract on Lower State and Bristol Roads. It's a Toll Brothers development of cluster homes. There's a minor subdivision at the...
Tabby, Tabby.
Tabby, Tabby. That's terrible. Pebble Hill Road for two single-family residential lots. A final plan review of amended Phase II plan for the YMCA. In process, we've got a preliminary land development for the Brooks Tract subdivision for four new single-family homes. That's at Cherry Lane and Pine View Drive. The pavilion at Furlong, it's a concept plan for 124 senior living apartments at the Grasso Property Swamp and York Roads. This has been going on, you know well, that this project, hopefully, something will move ahead there. Sketch plan for the Tabor property, a possible zoning change to allow for senior personal care, memory care living, office, community center, and daycare uses. Coordination with the Doylestown Borough and the Wawa, on the Wawa at Main Street and Route 202 in the Borough. And a preliminary land development conditional use for the Preserve at Buck's Farm, Burke's Farm, sorry. So that's where we are, and you have that in your packets, and hopefully, we can get you guys to move on that.
Well, the comprehensive plan you intend, and I've read through this, will that include like the, what's going on going now in the parks and recreation studies and those plans as well?
No.
No?
No.
Yeah, I know, but it is referenced.
Way back when...
It's referenced in the...
We included everything in one.
That was a comprehensive, full-blown, this is an amendment to the existing.
This is, I realize that. This is an update. We did an amendment in 2010, however, that included everything, just to satisfy...
It makes reference, Jeff, I believe, the current, the current plan makes reference to all those plans, and when they do their update, we should make this, make sure that it gets that new update, too.
Yeah, it just doesn't incorporate it. Well, I don't, I'm not quite sure, I know what this is trying, what this is doing, but I want to make sure we don't lose pieces of what we've already done and what we're already doing. You know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, what we're doing right now. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Other than that, it's fine. Just, I would just see, like to see some kind of incorporation to, or reference to all the other plans.
Well, we'll make sure that's, that's...
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I know what you mean.
Like there are bits and pieces of plans all over the place. I'd like to see if this is our comprehensive plan reference to the other plans that are ongoing.
Yes, and we will make sure that's clear, because that needs to be linked together.
Yes, thank you. That's all. No, thanks, good work. Any other questions?
I have one question.
I'm not done. I mean, I'm just saying, I wasn't going to...
A question within the comprehensive plan itself. Like for 17 years, the growth in Doylestown Township has been flat, basically.
Yeah.
But now we're projecting growth. It doesn't get into what's driving that growth.
There's not a lot of growth. The demographics are changing a little bit. The last set of demographics that we were looking at, it was projecting more, what we're seeing now is a more aging population. And that's why we are looking at improving, you know, doing some, you know, some more, what do we call it?
Senior facilities.
Not, well, senior facilities, but also there's other things that, what we've been looking at is a more dense, you know, we've got plenty of single-family houses on two-acre lots. We have lots of those. What we don't have are smaller, you know, level ranchers on small lots or cluster developments. And that's what we've been trying to promote, is that kind of more walkability and smaller projects and smaller housing, so that's, and we're finding that that is attractive not only to seniors, but to younger people. Because in the future, you know, if people aren't driving as much, they're using Uber, they're doing other things, we're looking at that. And it may be, we don't want to restrict it to restricted age communities, but have more mixed use, but denser areas. So that's...
Makes sense.
What we're looking at. And we're seeing our school population dropping.
And part of that growth can, is, you're not seeing developers come in with the one-acre, two-acre houses. You're seeing the senior living and the condos...
The cluster developments, townhouses.
Townhouses, which obviously, you know, more people live in a smaller area.
Right.
With the elevators.
The other thing that was curious to me, I look at the land use map that you have, in the existing one, there's sections of it that are agriculture or preserved farmland. In the future land use, I don't see it there at all.
Any preserved land hasn't changed.
It just didn't get carried forward, I think.
Maybe that's it, I don't know. I don't know.
Check that.
I'll show it directly.
Okay, because I don't think we had changed any preserved land. No. We were just looking at, like, some of the areas that are undeveloped, rather than being R1 zoning, you know, maybe we need to look at those in some, in terms of doing something a little more dense.
Well, they just call it, I think she just calls it two different things, private open space and public open space. It looks like they separated out two different categories.
That's right, we can sort it out afterwards. I just didn't see it, just, okay.
One part that I noticed that seemed maybe a little misleading was the population distribution chart that's on there. And in the commentary, it says the larger, the largest group is 40 to 59 years old. But just mathematically, if you're looking at the chart, it says 35 to 64 years. It shows like the large bar graph for that. And just by sheer number of years in that bar, there's going to be more people. So it's not that, it's, there's a wider range to pull that population from than the zero to five, you know?
Right, right.
So that's, I'm just afraid that it'll skew people thinking that we're going to have so many people aging at the same time, but it's actually 29 years.
I'm not sure I follow your, I'm looking at the chart here.
Right. So if you look at the largest bar, this one?
35 to 64.
35 to 64.
That's 29 years' worth of, 29-year, yes, span in age. So of course, it's going to be the larger one. It's not like there's, maybe I'm not explaining it too.
Well, the others are 14.
No, it gives us a false sense of what aging looks like.
The range is greater.
She thinks she should be breaking out into two bars or something.
Too big of a group.
Too big of a bar.
It's just a large population compared to the other age groups, so it's going to, it skews it, to make it look like we have this massive amount of people who are going to be aging soon.
Oh, we do.
Well, we do. And that's the population of people that are in the workforce, you know? So they're the workforce and all of that, and then, you know, once they pass that age and start to retire, they're probably looking for smaller properties.
We're doing the census this year, right?
2020. Yeah, 2020.
Well, so, I'm not saying, well, we should wait, but that, those, that information might be helpful to this comprehensive plan, right?
Oh, absolutely.
So I'm just thinking, maybe you want to hold...
You can always adjust that.
We can adjust, I mean, you know, the whole point was that we needed to relook at this after 10 years, and this is the time, you know, to say, okay, let's just, you know, it's 10 years, let's do something now.
Okay.
But it's, it's always changing.
Yep, okay.
Those updates are important.
That's good.
And it's a good point that Jen brought up, too. I think we'll take a look at that. But I think what we're looking for tonight, and I'll make the motion, is to move this along the process, where we have to send it to Bucks County, contiguous townships, et cetera, to get all their feedback, and then it's going to come back to us in 45...
We have to give them 45 days.
Give them 45, so it's going to come back in a couple of months, so we can review it again. We would like to get the process going to get it out to the other municipalities.
Okay, so you want, what's your motion?
To start the process and send this comprehensive plan and its attachments out to the proper authorities, Bucks County Planning Commission, and the contiguous township municipalities.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. Are you willing to incorporate those before it goes out?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Or reference them?
Right.
Okay, thanks. All right, there's a motion and a second. Anything else? Anybody else have any questions? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Henry.
Okay, thank you very much.
Very much.
Thank you, Judy.
A lot of good work there, appreciate it.
A lot of hard work.
All right, zoning hearing board, Mr. Lair is up next for a presentation from the zoning hearing board. Chairman, Bill Lair.
Thank you, Barbara. Number one, I want to just thank the board. As you well know, Rich Gaver moved out of the township and left the board, and you reappointed Sam Castanza on the board, and I want to thank the board for doing that. It's nice to have a engineer on the board where he can give insight as far as some of the projects that are happening within the township, and also when variances come over. So thanks for the appointment for Sam. We had, past year, 2018, we had thirteen hearings. They were your normal hearings, in-law suites, side and rear, your variances, office and home, nothing really controversial. We did have one, it lasted actually three months, and that was the Vertical Bridge cellphone on Edison Furlong. As we, as you know, we rejected that, and I think it's now out of the township's hand, and it's in the, is it in the county courts, is that where that is?
In the county and federal courts.
Okay, so we're out of it as far as the township is concerned.
Well, the township's involved only because there's litigation, but there's nothing else the township has to do or take any action with respect to it, other than it's in litigation.
Good. Which brings up the next subject. We did have, and I understand, talking to Stephanie, and I, I was, I guess, talking to you, Jeff, Crown Castle, that has been pulled, we're not going to have that hearing?
You're not going to have that hearing.
Okay, and is that, that's because it's in a, in the right of way?
That's because the, from the time the township adopted the ordinance, the law's changed.
Okay.
And there's preclusions, and they're, all but three are in public rights of way, most of which are penned out, and the other three, we've made adjustments with the Crown Castle to make it more appropriate where they're putting it, so there's no need for any hearings anymore.
Okay, good. Do you see, how about going forward? Is that going to be a concern for the township as far as cell towers are concerned? Is that, you're going to see more of that, do you think, or?
Well, it's.
That's hard to tell.
Hard to tell, I wish I could have a crystal ball, but it's certainly less intrusive than a cell tower.
It is, and I thought it was interesting, and doing some research when Vertical Bridge was in, because it was great here, it was three months, but it was very educational, is just finding out just what's out there as far as cell towers. We really don't need these huge cell towers that we used to see, where they can do more in smaller towers, and I, I saw the Borough had done the same thing, and I was just curious, what do you think that's going to happen as far as a township? So I wasn't sure if you had any idea.
Whatever the marketplace and the technology drives is what it is.
There you go. Well, again, that's it, thank you, it's, it's an interesting board, and we look forward to, you know, what else comes up in 2019. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill. All right, any visitor or public comment?
Amy Kaminsky from fifteen-sixty Lower State Road, almost said my engineering firm. And I just want to congratulate the township on their recent communication award that you received, I thought that was great to read about that. And one thing that I did want to recommend is that perhaps we could have some of these plans, traffic impact studies, things that are being submitted to the township, posted on the website, so that we don't have to come to the municipality room to look them up. Most municipalities offer that, and it gives an option to be able to look at things and determine whether you want to comment on them or not.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move on with the rest of the agenda. Some announcements, our next meeting is Tuesday, May seventh, at seven P.M. We're going to be closed on Good Friday, which is April nineteenth. Red Cross Spring, Red Cross Spring Blood Drive is Monday, April sixteenth, two to seven, and it's going to be right here in the, on the tennis courts. We're going to have a Rome and Country Roads of Tuscany trip in 2019, that's co-sponsored with Doylestown Township Park and Rec. and Premier World Discovery. And Doylestown Township Park and Rec. is also running a bus trip on the, to the nine-eleven museum, and that's Friday, April twenty-sixth. Pennsylvania Lime Resource is at the Delaware Valley University on April third, 2019, at seven P.M. The Doylestown Township Golf Outing, Monday, June third, Doylestown Country Club, I have brochures up here for everyone, it's a fun day, it's, it's a scramble, it starts at nine in the morning. All proceeds benefit the park system. We're going to be celebrating Arbor Day on April twenty-seventh, nine to one, so that's a Doylestown Township celebration, so please come out to Central Park for tree maintenance. A bird walk and Kids Castle, I mean, excuse me, bird walk and touch-a-talk are both on May fourth. The bird walk starts at eight-thirty A.M., it's open to all birders and anybody interested. Bring your own binoculars, it's for any level of interest in child or professional birders. Touch-a-talk, as I said, is May fourth also, that'll start at ten A.M. to one P.M. Doylestown Township Unsung Hero, applications or submissions for nominations, deadline is May fifteenth, 2019. The unsung hero recognizes someone in this community, doesn't have to be a member of the, well, is not to be a member of the township, but a volunteer or any other member in this community who puts in an inordinate amount of time into her community or his community without recognition, not resume building, and doesn't really tout her own or his own, you know, accomplishments. So it's the unsung hero for a reason. So submissions are due by May fifteenth. Kids Castle's closed, you're going to, they'll be open sometime in the future, they're doing maintenance and some renovations. And then drop your leaf and yard waste every third Saturday, nine A.M. to eleven A.M. at the New Britain entrance to Central Park. And, oh yeah, one other thing, the Blitz is coming to, back to this community, April sixth to April twenty-ninth. The Blitz is an information and participation for all community members, and it's to bring highlight to drugs and alcohol addictions and the opioid crisis. So there's constant updates, so please feel free to go to the event organization, and you can find it on the website. It's, it's called True Speaks, a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation, or just Google Bucks County Blitz Three, and it'll come up. All the information's going to be right there, it's a good endeavor. That's it for the announcements, I think, yep. Minutes approval for the regular meeting of March nineteenth is next for your consideration, everyone had an opportunity to review.
Yes.
I saw one correction referring to page four, paragraph one, the increase in the, the police contract is three-point-two-five, three-point-two-five, and three-point-five-oh instead of three-point-oh-five. That was the only correction I saw.
Oh, yeah, good catch.
Anything else? Hearing none, comments, is there a motion to approve the minutes with that correction?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okey-dokey. Next item on the agenda is a permit waiver request from the Designer House Village Approve and Association for their designer house this year, they want to put a sign up at Doylestown Hospital, and it's a hundred-and-twenty-dollar permit fee. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain, because I'm a member of the VIA and sponsor this event, so. Next item, solicitor.
I will pass until we get to another item on the agenda, Madam Chairperson.
Township Engineer?
Nothing of dissent.
Chief?
Nothing to report.
All right, Directive Ops.
Okay, thank you, you have, before you, our 2019 law maintenance contract. If, refresh your memory, in 2017, we put this contract out to bid, had a base year for 2017 with the option for two one-year extensions. Last year, you extended GTO Landscaping's contract for the first one-year extension. I'm asking for your approval for the, another one-year extension. GTO submitted their request for the one-year extension for 2019 in the amount of ninety-three thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and forty-four cents.
So it's a one-year extension with a one percent increase?
Correct.
All right, is there a motion to approve the extension with a one percent increase?
Move to approve.
All second? There's a second, Mr. Colallo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The other, the other point of that, yes, there was a one percent increase, but prior year, there was no increase.
Yes, exactly, I, I didn't mean to make it look like.
No, that's fine.
You know, if I, if I could just interrupt, make one comment, because it just came to my head. The DTMA also does a lot of maintenance, mowing, and they, and we talked a little bit about partnering in the future, you know, would one of these be able to do both, so just as a.
We could do that.
Well, I mean, talk, talk about it.
Yeah, so what the plan, our plan is that next year, because this contract is last year, we would put out the bid next year, and we can, we can partner with the DTMA if that's, and we can make that work.
Boy, that makes a lot of sense.
Okay. Next item is the replacement of the Field Five backstop at Turk Park Two. This, this backstop was removed to allow DAA to do some field work that they did at their own expense, so we're partnering with them, and we're replacing this. This was a budgeted line item in this year's budget. We received one, two, three, four proposals, one company declined to submit. I'm asking for your approval to approve Crown Fence Company to replace the backstop in the amount of sixteen thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars.
Questions about this? No? Is there a motion?
It says nine ninety-five in the agenda, and he said nine fifty-five.
Sixteen thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-five, my apologies. Give credit to Jeff, he caught that before Mr. Garten did.
All right, all right, is there a motion to approve the expenditure of sixteen thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars to replace the fencing at Turk Park Two?
Move to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, change order summary, everyone saw that, we didn't have to take any action on that.
Change order in front of you for Penn Builders, change order number eight, this includes changes to millwork, masonry, some concrete work, and carpeting. The total for this change order is twenty thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars and twenty-five cents.
That's an add-on to Penn Builders. Any questions about this? Mr. Snyder, you've reviewed this.
No, yes, I have reviewed it all, yes, these are good to go.
This is, this is one we looked at two weeks ago.
Yep.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, that was my only question, is, you know, the building committee's seen all this stuff.
Yes, yes, we have.
And I'm good.
Yes. All right, there's a motion.
All second.
Second?
Mm-hmm.
Who made the motion, I'm afraid?
Rick.
Rick, thank you. Motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, next item.
Let's check change order number four, this is for changes to site lighting that had, actually, we had to meet our own.
We had to meet our own ordinance.
Ordinances and requirements, so that was why we had the change, we worked with the code department to do that, and also for some additional lighting within the building. That change order is for three thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety dollars and eighty-six cents.
We haven't been able to figure out why the initial plan didn't include lights that were within our ordinance, but we fixed it before it got out of hand, so is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Is there a second? Apparently, there's some room for evaluation, whatever.
Interpretation.
Interpretation, yeah.
Interpretation of the ordinance, yes.
Motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We lost the interpretation, and our zoning officer won, so we said we better, we better comply. All right, next item.
Anchor fire protection, change order number two, due to some changes in the ceiling in the boiler room, required changes to the fire protection system. This change order is for two thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars.
Is there a motion to approve the change order? We had two, two thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-eight.
Three thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars, thank you, Jeff.
I didn't say a word.
Jeff A., not Jeff.
Oh.
G.
I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Is there a second? All right, thanks, Rick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, is this, no, it's not the last one, continue.
Administration Building Furniture Proposal Award Recommendation. Back in the end of 2018, we put out bids with the assistance of Mary Senior, our interior designer, on the project. We received bids, and basically, due to cost of those bids, we rejected them, we didn't even consider them, actually, we didn't reject them, and the building committee looked at them, we decided to, to rebid the project, and we sent it back out with some approved equal specs. We received two bids, one from Corporate Environments, one from Tanner Furniture. Mary Senior has reviewed the bids, and she's included her recommendation, the letter was in your packet. The building committee has talked about this extensively, and I'm asking for your approval to award the furniture contract as a co-star's purchase to Corporate Environments, amount of two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollars, seven-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars and fourteen cents.
Sounds like a lot for furniture, doesn't it? Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second?
It really is what it costs.
I know.
Oh, no, I.
Well.
And, and when we talk about window treatments, we're not talking about, like, fancy curtains, we're just talking about blinds, so.
And I know the committee spent a lot of time on this, just from.
I will just indicate the, the difference between the first bids that we rejected and the second, these bids was forty-eight thousand dollars, just by changing the spec.
Yeah.
So.
Does this include the meeting room chairs? I'm wondering about that yet.
It does.
It does? Awesome.
Yeah.
All right, is there a motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Continue, one more.
The administration and police building security system proposal, we had received proposals for the installation of the alarm security system in the new building, received three proposals. These are Reliance Alarm Company, Holocong Locksmith, and Central Security, and Access Control Corporation. We basically, the building committee made the recommendation to award the contract to Reliance Alarm. We worked with Mr. Garten regarding the terms and conditions of the Reliance Alarm contract to install the equipment, as well as the monitoring contract. We've gone around and around, and with Mr. Garten's blessing, we have approval, or at least his agreement, to move forward. I'm asking for your approval to award the contract, or approve the contract for the installation of the security system in the amount of fourteen thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars, as well as a three-year monitoring contract at four-hundred-and-eighty dollars per year, which equals forty dollars per month.
All right. We've been through this Reliance Alarm Company contract for a bit now, so is there a motion to approve?
There is a motion to approve.
All second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Good riddance.
Okay. I neglected to report at the beginning of the agenda, I mean, at the beginning of the meeting, that there's been a change to the agenda, that the Doylestown Walk Land Development is off for tonight, but we are going to go forward with the hearing on the, where is it?
Conditional use.
Conditional use for Doylestown Walk. Mr. Garten, you want to take your.
We have to go through your manager's report and supervise.
All right. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped the agenda. Do you have a report, Madam Manager?
I just want to share, I know it was in the newspaper, but we did receive the DVR PC, Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission feasibility study grant for thirty thousand. You'll remember that Tom Kelso from the Bike Height Committee did a presentation a few months ago on that trail, which will take us, what we're saying, Central Park, basically along 202, kind of in the backside of the farm office complex, and tie into the 202 on that side, so, all very excited, we have that little parking lot there, that, so.
That's.
That's another study area, bringing, connect, making.
One big parking lot.
I know. Well, we have the.
Should put a diner on there.
Used to be a restaurant there years ago.
I would love a diner right there. All right, let's do this, anything else, Ms. Mason?
No, I have nothing else at this time.
All right, how about Ms. Herring?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Snyder?
Just wanted to make one comment about the budget meeting we just had. Only because I would encourage all residents that have any interest in learning more about what goes on within the township budget itself, and how it's made up, and the amount of work that goes in, it would benefit everybody to sit in on just on one of them. Outside of those meetings, there's three meetings where they go through 650 line items to get down to the right number. So, these things are scrutinized in detail off the meeting, but during the meeting, we go through the process and focus on the dollar. So, it was an excellent job today, and it keeps getting better and better, and the numbers get tighter and tighter, and it was just a great job.
Yes, it really was, I agree. Thank you. Rick, you have anything?
Two comments. One, at the planning commission meeting, we had Marty Brooks Development Command, he's looking to put in a few homes there, and I just want to recognize Jeff Adenazio, I mean, when your report came in, and they were going through it in detail, one of the few times in my 17 years where things stopped and people had to grab the ordinance book and see what you were applying, and so, your detail was excellent. We really appreciate it, it was a nice job. The other thing is, there's a lot of talk about PFAS, and I usually talk about DTMA and all that we're doing, and expansions, and the new developments, et cetera, et cetera. But PFAS, I'll turn it over to Keith. I asked him to come in and spend a few minutes to update the township and the board on where we're at with PFAS, and what we do, and our aggressiveness to attack this.
Hi, everybody, and thank you for giving me the opportunity. I'll be brief.
Who are you?
Oh, sorry. I'm Keith Haas. I'm the executive director of the Doylestown Township Municipal Authority, and as Rick said, I'll quickly go over the past couple of years of what is going on with PFAS and how it has impacted DTMA. PFAS, as you may know, is a chemical that has contaminated our aquifers, more so in Warrington, Horsham, and Warminster. If you read the papers, they are currently no longer using their groundwater. They are at what I'll call ground zero. They have contamination on the order of thousands of parts per trillion of this chemical in their water. We're on the periphery. We do not have a, I'll call it substantial amount of PFAS in our water. Our water is well below all the EPA and DEP health standards. However, politics has been kind of impacting how we operate our wells, and our local politicians, and some national politicians have decided that they are going to legislate what amount of chemical can be in the water instead of the DEP and the EPA. And when you start doing that, it is a very dangerous game to play, and it comes down to money. I won't get in the weeds, but DTMA has been forced to react, and we want to reach out to our local politicians. So, we have invited Representative Fitzpatrick to come take a tour of our facilities, as well as give a presentation on what this legislation could potentially do to the cost of water. Our water is safe, there is nothing wrong with our water, but we, as a smaller authority, are being caught in the politics of a larger game that's happening across, not a game, but a larger issue that's happening across southeastern PA and the nation in particular. It's gone all the way up to the EPA and with the Trump administration. So, in a couple of weeks, April 16th, Representative Fitzpatrick will be visiting us, and I would like to invite any of the interested supervisors that would like to attend. We're going to take a tour of one of our wells that was shut down about three years ago, as well as take a tour of a currently operating well that produces safe, clean drinking water that we supply to our nearly 3,000 customers every day. So, the meetings are Tuesday, April 16th, at 10:00 a.m., so you can let Rick or myself know. And our goal is basically to assist the representative, to, we want to be a resource for him. We don't want to dictate what he needs to do, we just want to show him what the potential impacts are on communities across southeastern PA. So, that's our whole goal for inviting him here, so...
Thank you.
It's a good idea.
Any questions?
Just one comment. We found, Keith and I found out that with this PFAS situation, and you can expound on a few more, but if you use dental floss...
Uh-oh.
Yes.
PFAS on that glide.
This PFAS is...
It's everywhere.
It's everywhere.
On glide?
So, you're healthy if you have black teeth.
It's on your oral B glide floss, which I use every day, but carpets, it's on stain master carpets, it's on your pots and pans, it's on everything. It's on your wear force clothes, stain repellents. It's a chemical that is everywhere, so it's just not in drinking water, it's everywhere.
Is there a floss that it doesn't have? You might, I want to change my floss on the way home.
Full thread.
Go to the grocery store.
Buy the spearmint and not the cinnamon, so...
Thanks, Keith.
Thanks, Keith.
All right, I only have one reference, and that is our Doylestown Township, no, our Township News, which is our, the organization of PSTATs, Pennsylvania Association of Township Officials, does a magazine every month, and this month, our Parks and Recreation Department is featured, so I'd just like to congratulate Karen for her great job and interview. I know you were quoted as well, so thank you for doing that. All right, now, now you're on.
Drumroll.
There you go.
The property in question is located along Bristol Road at or near the intersection with Lower State Road. It affects tax parcels 9-7-1, 9-7-2, 9-7-2-1, 9-7-2 dot 001. Notice that this hearing appeared in the intelligencer on March 19, 2019, and again on March 26, 2019. The applicant Toll Brothers seeks conditional use approval so as to be able to be permitted to encroach in the Zone 1 and Zone 2 riparian buffers for the purpose of the installation of centralized water and sewer lines, and public utility transmission lines, as well as a small intrusion for detention basin. Relevant provisions of the Doylestown Township zoning ordinance are sections 175-103.4A2B, 175-103.9A2B, 175-103.4B2C, and 175-103.4B2G. The application, as well as all reports and recommendations, pardon me, received from the township engineer, township planner, and the planning commissioner entered into the record. First of all, is anyone desired party status? I see no hands. Your planning commission met on January 28, 2019, and recommended the conditional use approval be granted, subject to certain conditions. Mr. Edelman, do you have any presentation you'd like to put off record?
Yes, I do. Good evening, Greg Edelman here on behalf of Toll Brothers. Just one clarification to your introduction, Mr. Garten. The riparian corridor relief is also as a result of a small sliver of a stormwater basin.
I did mention basin.
Oh, okay, all right, I didn't make sure of that.
You were shrifling your papers when I said that.
I think it was the TV guy who was telling me I was doing something wrong. I do have exhibits in a packet, if I could pass them out in order to move things quickly.
Provide reporter with a copy as well.
Is that going to be incorporated?
Yes. And we'll incorporate the exhibits into the record.
Thank you.
Please let the record reflect that I handed out a packet of exhibits labeled Exhibit A1 through A5, and for the record, A1 is a copy of the relevant deed for the subject property. A2 is a redacted portion of the agreement of sale. A3 is the narrative from the conditional use application. A4 is the curriculum vitae of Jeff Madden, our project engineer is standing to my right. And A5 is a collection of nine plan sheets that were submitted with the conditional use application. Specifically, Sheet 9 is the one we would be talking about here this evening, and if I could just have Mr. Madden sworn very briefly at this time. Is that the one you wanted?
Yes. I do.
And I'd ask the board to take notice of Mr. Madden's expert qualifications as a licensed civil engineer in Pennsylvania. We're here this evening, obviously, just for sewer and water lines and a portion of the basin, and Mr. Madden, just very briefly for the board, if you could highlight using Sheet 9 of Exhibit A5, the nature of the improvements and the relief requested.
Sure, just to give you some bearings, the site is located at the corner of Bristol Road and Lower State Road. The area in question is along the eastern portion of the tract against the Mill Creek waterway cutting through the site. There is a connection point from the subdivision to the location of the proposed or being built San Tore Sewer Facility pump station that we would need to tie into, as well as tie into water, which is north along Lower State Road. And also in question was the location of Basin 1, which is along Bristol Pike, or sorry, Bristol Road. There is a small sliver of the basin itself that encroaches into the Zone 2 of the site.
Okay, and will the improvements have any negative impact on either the riparian zones that are encroached?
They will not.
And how will the water and sewer lines be installed, again?
They will be installed using an open trench system across the stream, and will be roughly in depth anywhere between four foot and 10 foot in that area, with the water being closer to the ground at four foot.
Okay, and who will eventually become the owner of the water line?
The owner of the water line will be DTMA.
And who will become the owner of the sewer line?
I believe it's Bucks County Sew and Water Authority.
Okay. I have nothing further for Mr. Madden.
Any questions? I would note that the board was inclined to approve the conditional use, will be subject to the condition of compliance with Boucher &amp; James' Feeding Review Letter dated March 28, 2019. Also, the applicant shall comply with any and all codes, orders, laws, and regulations of the township, and lastly, all review fees and expenses incurred by the township be paid by the applicant, and applicant shall secure final subdivision proof with Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors. Would you agree to those conditions?
Yes, on behalf of the applicant, I do.
Any questions, anybody?
No, no.
Nope.
Any questions from the audience? Hearing none, or is there a motion to approve the application?
I make a motion to approve the application for Doylestown Walk.
Second.
Conditional use.
Is that what I said?
Doylestown Walk, conditional use.
Doylestown Walk, conditional use.
Thank you, I didn't hear you, sorry. There's a motion, a second, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, you're good to go.
Thank you very much for your time.
The next item is you will need to accept the offer of the extension when it gets to the item number seven.
Do you want to, let's read that. All right, this is an application for extension of the preliminary final land development of Toll Brothers for the Braylong Schmidt Tracks, extension until May 15. We have to grant this extension because otherwise we will be in violation of our ordinance. So, it's a request by the applicant Toll Brothers to, and they're extending us the timeline, which the board of supervisors must act on the above referenced preliminary final land development application pursuant to Pennsylvania Municipal Planning Code until May 15, 2019. Is there a motion to approve the extension or accept the extension, I should say?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would you like a copy of this, sir?
Thank you, again.
You're welcome.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, you too. All right. Next item on the agenda, you're done. Thank you. Business is off. National Work Zone Awareness Week. Didn't know there was such a thing, but it's good to have.
It is.
Just what we need, another resolution.
Yes. I don't even have it.
It's April 8 through the 12th, and this is a recommendation from our safety committee, which is made up of members of our township staff. They meet periodically to review safety issues, and this is something that they are promoting, and would recommend that we have a resolution to recognize the week.
All right, is there a motion to approve the resolution yet not numbered? Recognizing National Work Zone Awareness Week.
Move to approve.
Thank you. April 8 through April 12. Is there a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Same.
Okay. Do you want to cite why you're abstaining, because you don't like work zone?
Yeah, I mean, as I've done over the past few years, these resolutions, I don't think that's necessary.
Okay. All right, next item is zoning hearing board application requesting a variance for 21 Greenway Drive.
Recommendation would be to send the solicitor impose the thing, we're going to kind of get on a slippery slope if we allow, if this were granted and we allow residents to start to put things in the...
In stormwater easements.
Stormwater easements and problems that it creates. They want to put a fence in the easement, right? And our ordinance is specific on the structures in the easement.
And we've run into issues in the past where, you know, there are playgrounds and all kinds of, it's just a bad policy to get...
Well, just for clarification to that point, if I'm looking at the last page before you get to the board of supervisors' information, and there's a picture there, and it shows a, when I, from the written description, I didn't quite understand exactly what they were asking for. So, are they asking to put a fence behind that place that's there? Is that what this is?
Well, the bigger concern is the one with the picture of the inlet there. That inlet will, they're going to fence that inlet in, and when that's where the, where the stormwater easement is, and that goes into our overall stormwater easement and stormwater...
He's asking where to fence them.
So, what that means, their neighbor, their neighbor has the fence up.
Yeah, but that would be, they probably don't have an easement, the easement's on...
Just for clarifying, he's asking for a fence more into the easement back this way.
Right, because here's the inlet over here on the side.
Right, no.
No, just look at this picture here. He's asking, they want to put the fence behind this jungle gym thing. What instruction?
That's the one I'm asking about, yeah.
Yeah, but it, yes, they...
Yeah, they want to put the fence back here, and we realize it's in the, it's in the stormwater.
I believe the, that's, yeah, they want to fence it in, but the inlet, I believe, is...
No.
To clarify, Stephanie?
Yeah.
Between those two lots, 11 and 12, there is an easement that runs along the joining property line. The stormwater easement, the pipe and the inlet run along the property line, so the fence would be entirely in the easement between lots 11 and 12, of which the inlet is actually on Lot 12. So, it would leave the inlet inside of Lot 12. Bigger issue is just the fence is entirely in the easement along there. The neighboring property appears to have stopped the fence short of the easement that runs behind the properties.
He put it where he was supposed to put it.
Supposed to put it, right, exactly.
So, he just has to move his jungle gym.
Yes. Agreed.
I make a motion, we send our solicitor in, to zoning hearing board in opposition to this request.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Announcements, May 7 is our next meeting at 7:00 p.m. We're going to be closed April 19 for Good Friday. Red Cross Spring Blood Drive is April 16, 2 to 7, right here on the, in the mobile on the Centennis Courts. Doylestown Township Park and Rec is hosting a Country Roads of Tuscany trip in 2019 with Premier World Discovery. Doylestown Township Park and Rec is also hosting a bus trip to the 9/11 Museum on Friday, April 26. Pennsylvania Lime Resource at Delaware Valley University, April 3 at 7:00 p.m. Doylestown Township, and Celebrating Arbor Day on April 27, 9 to 1. We're going to do maintenance in Central Park, rain or shine. Bird Walk at Central Park on May 4 at 8:30. Touch a Truck on May 4, 10 to 1. Doylestown Golf Outing, June 3, 2019 at 9:00 a.m. Shotgun Start at Doylestown Country Club. And Unsung Hero Deadline submission is May 15. Kids Castle is closed. Leaf and Yard Recycling is the third Saturday of each month, 9 to 11. Any drop-off site is at the New Britain entrance to Central Park. Any other business? Hearing none, we're adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.
Good night, all.
Good night. Good night. Good night. There's the stop sign.